There's rhetoric that's not supported by what's happened. In places, for example, where the minimum wage has been raised above the federal minimum wage in municipalities and in states, in fact, their economies have done better, not worse. They have not lost jobs. You've got people, you help lift people out of poverty, number one. Number two, these folks are able to support themselves, so they're less dependent on the government for their support. And number three, because they're making more money, they could put more money back in the economy. The minimum wage is a winner, and I would just add, the country's for this. You know, I hear it everywhere I go. Every poll I've ever seen says the vast majority of Americans are for raising the minimum wage, but it's being stopped by politicians in Washington.
You raise the minimum wage, in effect, you raise all wages because there will be sort of an accord in effect as a result of raising—
Rising tide lifts all boats.
Right. The other argument that has been made, and I want you to respond to this one, is that in effect, you're promoting outsourcing, because if the job, if the wages get too high here in the United States, people are going to take their work to India, or China, or El Coria, or Mexico, where labor is cheaper, and as a result, you're going to increase unemployment in the United States.
Largely untrue, because most of the jobs that are minimum wage jobs are service economy jobs. Working, you just mentioned, working in McDonald's, working in restaurants, working in hotels, providing home health services, those kind of jobs, they can't go anywhere else. Those are jobs that have to be done in the United States, and we have sort of a basic question, whether people in these jobs, and there are probably 50 million of them in the United States, and maybe as many as 10 million more over the next decade. This is the place where we have real growth in the creation of jobs in America. The question is, are those folks who are working hard, supporting their families, are we actually going to value their work and allow them to have a decent income and support themselves? Or are people who are working full-time going to live in poverty? It's not right.
We're almost out of time, but are you missing Washington now that you're no longer a U.S. senator? Are you happy to be outside of Washington?
I love it where I am now. I enjoyed serving in the Senate. I have to be honest with you, I don't miss Washington a lot. I have some good friends here, but we love living in North Carolina.
If you're elected President of the United States, you know you're going to have to come back to live inside the Beltway.
We'll deal with that, win it if it ever happens.
And Elizabeth is on board, she's ready for this challenge. If you—
The part that we tabled, because we, yeah, we had a multiple vote, right, Mr. Young?
Right.
Just on the—
We did something and we—
We did $250,000, then we—
Then we moved that out, and then we did, then we did, we did a tabling as well. So this will just resend the vote at the table without objection. Supervisor Peskam.
And then, on the item that's on the table, I'd make a motion to amend it to $1 and continue it to the call of the chair.
So moved.
So we have motions and a second, colleagues. Ms. Samuda, do you understand what we're doing? You understand the intent?
Don't worry, after we hold the hearing, we'll file the item, and there won't be a supplemental sitting on your list for a dollar.
So then, we'll do this without objection, colleagues? And the President will do whatever he needs procedurally to get that over to GAO, or did we already do that?
I assume that Ms. Calvio will bring me the item to transfer it.
Very good. Mr. Young, can you read item number seven, please?
Item number seven, amendments to San Francisco Administrative Code and amendment to minimum compensation ordinance by making both substantive and clarifying changes.
Supervisor Amiano?
Thank you, Chair Daley, and thank you, members of the committee. I know it's been a long afternoon, and I understand, Chair Daley, you want to be a co-sponsor of this in addition to Supervisor Mercurini and McGoldrick, so I thank you for that. And the minimum compensation ordinance sets a living wage standard at $10.77 an hour with employer benefits and paid vacation for worker, workers at for profit city contractors. I'd like to ask the city attorney if you could just give us some quick highlights of the ordinance.
Through the, through the Chair Deputy City Attorney Cheryl Adams speaking. The new legislation is going to change the amount of the hourly wage. Currently, it's at $9 with the possibility of increasing up to $10.77. It will now start at $10.77 with a yearly increase based on the CPI. It also establishes the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement as the enforcing agency. Currently, it is the Department of Administrative Services that enforces the ordinance. Also, it will, the new legislation will provide the OLSA with enhanced powers to investigate and enforce the ordinance. Additionally, there's an administrative hearing process for employers to appeal determinations of the OLSA's enforcement determinations. And then as well, the new ordinance will authorize the city to collect liquidated damages from contractors who breach contracts. Also, there are provisions for collecting attorney's fees and other penalties.
Okay, thank you, city attorney. And Ms. Simmons, I'm trying to figure out exactly how big a pool would be needed. Yeah, that will be covered by the MCO. Could you just reiterate what the outcome of the March 8 Budget and Finance Committee was in regard to the IHSS workers?
Noel Simmons, Mayor's Budget Office, at that committee meeting, funding was approved in order to raise the wage rate for IHSS workers to $10.65 an hour.
Okay. And do we have an idea then, a ballpark about how many people might be covered by this?
There are approximately 13,000 IHSS workers.
13,000, okay. And then, either Ms. Simmons or Ms. Samuda, what is the CPI index number you're using? And in terms of cost, how much then would be needed to fully fund this ordinance to meet the obligation of the CPI and the 12 days of paid leave?
Supervisor, as the amendment is currently written, the proposed CPI adjustment is 2.8%, which is the CPI for all urban consumers in the Bay Area, and the fully annualized cost of implementing the ordinance as written would be approximately $22.9 million in fiscal year '06-'07.
All right. Are there any other CPIs out there that are less, or is this pretty much the standard of practice this way?
There is also the CPI for urban wage earners, which would be about 2.5 as opposed to the 2.8, but the change in the cost is relatively modest for that 0.3% difference.
Okay. Then, or Ms. Simmons or Ms. Samuda, correct me if I'm wrong, but is the city not planning to give nonprofits a COLA increase? Hypothetically speaking, as an alternative for the MCO, what would something like that cost?
Supervisor, the Mayor's Budget instructions directed individual city departments to assess the cost pressures on their nonprofit contractors and determine whether or not they needed a COLA. However, departments were not given additional money to fund a COLA, so if they were to do that, they would have had to make offsetting reductions elsewhere in their budget. When we did fund a 2% COLA on all general fund-supported contracts in the current fiscal year, the cost of doing so, my recollection, was approximately $6.5 million.
All right. I mean, the context for me is, obviously, the Human Services Network has a lot of issues, but I, their preference would be a COLA, because that way, everybody gets a raise, not just those working for contracts. And I just, I don't know if that'll fly, but it just puts the MCO in a proper financial context. And then back to the issue of the funding for the MCO. Has the Mayor's Budget Office considered any alternatives to the full funding? Perhaps a scheduled phase-in in order to partially fund or phase in the funds?
Supervisor, we did ask departments in their budget submissions this year to estimate the cost of providing an MCO increase, and we will be contemplating that cost as we develop the Mayor's proposed budget for June 1st.
All right, because, you know, obviously, those of us who are interested in this, in the advocates, would, you know, any of those recommendations before the committee makes a decision, we'd like to be consulted or know about it. Okay, members of the committee, I was hoping that we could get some of this out of committee, because there is a desire to have this annualized. In other words, you know, we could fund the MCO in its entirety, or conclude a best way to phase it in. We could send it to the full board now with annualized funding, or the other alternative would be to continue this item to be part of the budget discussion. But I just want to make sure that it's not a one-time fix, because I think it's very important that this funding be annualized. So I don't know what your pleasure will be, and I think, Ms. Simmons, some of the information I gathered from the Mayor's Budget Office is that you feel this cannot today be moved forward, that it would have to go back, that would have to be part of the budget discussion. Is that correct?
Supervisor, what I suggested to you is that last week before the committee, there was a supplemental appropriation that would have funded this year's portion of an increase to the MCO. The committee tabled that item, and so yes, I believe it would be more appropriate today if you wish to fund an additional increase to continue that to the budget discussion. What you have before you today is legislation that simply amends the wage rate but doesn't provide the funding to pay for that increase.
Be careful.
Supervisor Amiano, if I could—
Sure.
The action of the committee last week does not necessarily impact the decision that the committee could make on this item. I think that, in all fairness, after the action the committee took last week for us to pass this item in its current form now would be a bit of an unfunded mandate, but there's no necessary provision, there's not necessarily a provision against us doing that.
Okay, all right. But this is just weighing in on that. So Supervisor, I don't know what your pleasure is. Would you want to have some public comment before—
Well, we have to have public comment before we do anything, and I know that Supervisor McGoldrick's name on the roster, so generally, we take any member who wishes to speak before public comment.
All right.
Supervisor McGoldrick.
Thank you very much, and I'm, again, always pleased at this juncture to repeat that I am a co-sponsor of this legislation, and thanks Supervisor Amiano and his staff and all concerned and the stakeholders here. Very important, very important stakeholders, I think that's the key thing. What we're trying to do here, obviously, without having to repeat it over and over again, is to help those who are in the lowest-paid positions around our community, and certainly giving people a chance of some level of survivability at this level. As low as it still is, to increase it somewhat is just the proper thing to do. I would like to see this move out of committee. I think it's important to support this, to send it forward to the full board, and indeed, then, the full board, the mayor, I believe, in his budget considerations, would then, hearing from this branch of the government, include the necessary funds in order to fund this in the upcoming budget. I think it's most important to pass it now, rather than have it go through the sausage machinery of the budget process, just as we pass ordinances, day in and day out, week in and week out throughout the year, that then affect our budgetary considerations that we have to make as we go forward. So I think it's important, this is a piece of legislation, this is the ordinance, it doesn't have any money attached to it yet, but it says this is something we want to do, just as other things have come to us in different shapes and forms as ordinances, and then, once we pass the ordinance, then we do the appropriation work. I think that's the proper way to go here. I'd like to see it passed forward. I'd like to see the members of this committee send it forward, so the full board can deliberate this as soon as possible, and then you'd have this, and the mayor would have this, to then start including it in his budget ASAP.
I would concur.
Sounds good to me. It was outvoted last week. Any member of the public wish to comment on item number seven? I got a bunch of speakers cards, but I know a lot of folks had to go, so why don't you just come on up in no particular order? You have three minutes to comment, and welcome.
If I may, I have to leave, I have to be somewhere else. I appreciate, thank you, the opportunity to speak.
I understand that you're off to oppose some of my ballot measures at Labor. Have fun.
Right, and perhaps we'll see you there later. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Please, welcome.
Let the debate continue.
Good evening, Supervisors. I'd like to thank Supervisors Amiano, McGoldrick, and Mark Rami, Supervisor Daley, for supporting this particular amendment, this particular cause of ours. Also, I have several more signatures to add to the several hundred that we collected already. I am, thank you, Mr. Amiano. My name is Hugh Gregory. I represent the Living Wage Coalition. I work in MSC South, and I just want to say that, you know, we do a very, very hard job, and like Supervisor McGoldrick said, we deserve to be paid a fair wage. I've just put a pie chart onto the view screen here, and it kind of breaks up my expenses, what I make on a monthly income. My monthly take-home pay is $1,320. You see, the majority of my rent, the majority of my income goes to rent. Everything else is divvied up. I have $280 that goes towards food, $65 phone bill, $64 for school loans, for college loans that I'm paying off. I have $50 for Muni and BART. Of course, I have, say about $150 a month for child support, taking care of my kids, my child, should I say. I'm lucky to be spending $20 a month on PG&E, due to the fact they have a plan for low-income citizens. But you, if you add all that up, my total expenses are $1,314 a month. And you might have seen the commercials out there for the checking the cash, the payday loan type of organizations. I find myself constantly in debt to these organizations to pay off my loans. Again, the chart speaks for itself. The work that we do, it's a, it's a very noble job. Also, with higher wages, you get better worker retention. We have a lot of good people that come into this field, that simply leave due to the stress and strain of the situation, and of course, the low pay doesn't help facilitate keeping good workers in a particular field that I work in. Working with the homeless could be strenuous, there's a lot of mental issues, there's a lot of handicap issues, and the type of work that we do, we're simply asked to be paid a fair wage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Supervisors. I'm urging you to support the living wage amendment, to raise the wages for lower workers. I am particularly concerned about nurses aides in private nursing homes. They haven't had a raise for years, and being a retired nurse, I know how hard they work, and how difficult it is, and how dirty a work it is. And they're just not paid enough to support their families, and they deserve the respect for the work that they do. These workers provide invaluable services to their community. We need to retain these workers to ensure quality service to the residents of the city. These low-wage workers are being driven out of the city because they cannot afford to live here any longer. Raising wages to a living law would, would provide services to the community so that they can, so they can raise the wages of the lowest-paid workers to about $11 an hour. It is a matter of political priority, and this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, Supervisors. I'm Alice Lindstrom-Davis, and Wilma Newsom, the President of our organization, Church Women United, asked me to speak for her today. She has been, is having surgery today. And people from Church Women United have been here every week while this has been under consideration, and we've spoke to you about it as a moral issue, as an issue of justice, as an issue that we, as members of the faith community who are women, who have, many of us worked in these lower-wage jobs and tried to be an example to children, and had a hard time convincing children as to the value of going into a nurturing, public-service job when the wages and the family was suffering from the, below the poverty line because of the parents taking a job which was a job of sacrifice, a financial sacrifice. And when you do these jobs that are caring and nurturing jobs, you like to do them as a volunteer basis and be able to support yourself, but somebody has to do it full-time too, because a lot of it cannot be done volunteer. What the, what do people do in the shelters, what the, when caregiving gets to be, to be heavy, it has to be paid work. And people do this as paid work because they love it, because it's important to be done, or because that's what their talents are, or because they can't find anything else. And, or they can't, but when the people suffer because, and they're not valued to be on this, the COLA pattern like the rest of the society is, in a society that's based, where the economics are based on inflation and things keep falling behind, it shows that these positions are not valued, or at least the children of the families where these are, see that they're not valued, and they don't want to go into them. And so, we urge you to pass this legislation with or without current funding. The important thing is that it get moved forward, that it is an important thing.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Robert Bustamante. I work at the shelter at Fifth and Bryant, the city-funded shelter, and I'm here to ask you to support the amendments and for you to pass them on to the full board today. We've been in committee now for quite some time, and, you know, we'd like to see this move forward. I think that these amendments are really necessary in order to protect the social infrastructure of this city. We're talking about people who work in numerous, community-based nonprofits across this city, providing a range of services mostly that this board and different city departments or agencies have mandated that be provided to San Franciscans, and we're the ones providing those services to tens of thousands of people, probably every single day. And what's happening is that we cannot afford to live on the current minimum wage that we have. There's people moving out of town. I've been working three years at MSC South, and in that time, I've seen six coworkers have to move out of town. I've seen coworkers have to take in roommates. Some of my coworkers qualify for public assistance. Here we are, providing services to the communities, and we ourselves have to go and ask for food stamps or various other services, and actually qualify for them. I hope that you move on this today, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Supervisors. Mark Gruber, Living Wage Coalition and United Taxi Cab Workers. And just as the city has a responsibility to workers in the taxi industry by virtue of the fact that the city regulates the industry, there's a responsibility to people who are doing the work of the city through city contracts or on city property. The living wage law is a good law, a strong law, an imperfect law. It needs to be fixed. It was passed five and a half years ago now. The cost of living adjustments that were contained in the law have expired, so this is a law without a cost-of-living adjustment. I don't think the city of San Francisco wants to have that. There's a lack of parity between workers for profit and nonprofit companies. I think that's an incoherence that needs to be fixed, and I believe that CalWorks workers need to be brought into this. It's a question of dignity, it's a question of the value of labor. So these are things that need to be done. I think they should be done now. I don't think this should go into the mix of funding for the next budget year, because this is essentially a remedial measure. It's high time that this be done. It's five and a half years down the road since this was passed. You'd be fixing an existing imperfect law, and I think you should go ahead right now and do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. Next speaker, please.
Carl Kramer, San Francisco Living Wage Coalition. And I, in our view of things, that the law should be passed first, and then, the Mayor's office should be looking at where the cost for the law would be paid for, and then presenting that to the Board of Supervisors when it presents the budget on June 1st. So we're urging the Budget Finance Committee to send this to the board, to have it passed by the board, and send it to the mayor, so he can incorporate it into his deliberations on next year's budget. As far as what it would cost in the fiscal year, the next fiscal year, and we believe the costs for this fiscal year are covered, this board has already budgeted money for these wage increases that would cover the final month of this fiscal year, June, which would be the earliest that this amendment could take effect. The lion's share is on, for home care workers. Now, if the state minimum wage goes up a dollar, then the federal and state government are going to be paying about half of that increase. Also, Noel Simmons, she made a mistake in saying that the language was for Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. The language on page two is Consumer Price Index for Urban Wage Earners and Clerical Workers for the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose metropolitan area. The City Controller's Office has already set that for fiscal '06-'07 for the minimum wage ordinance, and this is basically the same language as the minimum wage ordinance, and that's what's set at 2.31%. So the overall, you know, the overall cost for the year is substantially less. The other thing is that it's a shame that on the minutes of the meetings, the, that the list of speakers and previous hearings aren't matched to what's turned in on the cards, as far as the names and the organizations. Often, it's just, this is a male speaker, a female speaker, a male speaker, names are misspelt, no identification, and it's a shame, because these were workers' faces that you saw at these previous meetings, who sat through these marathon sessions, waiting four or five hours to speak, as people did today. And you'll see from the speaker cards that were submitted today, that there were people that waited hours and just had to leave for work. But you saw before you, workers from the homeless shelters, work—
Thank you very much.
—health care, home care workers.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
And—
Thank you.
So, thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you very much. And let me just defend some of our workers. You know, our clerks are also workers who do the best job they can, and sometimes, I'm hard on clerks, because I host meetings that go to all kinds of hours in the evening, and they hang in to a couple of, our last meetings to nine, past nine o'clock at night, so also hard workers in our clerk's office, want to acknowledge them. Any more members of the public wish to comment on item number seven? Seeing none, we'll close. Public comments, Supervisor Amiano?
Yeah, I'm sorry we don't have a full complement here, but committee members, I would ask you to cut the workers some slack here. They, we, I apologize, because I had to delay the meeting because I had to be out. It is certainly a gesture of good faith to say that we would like this to happen and get the imprimatur of this committee. I understand what the resistance would be, but I really think it does more good for the common good than harm, and I would ask you to pass this out of committee today, rather than wait on it. People have been waiting a long time, and I— And I always listen to public comment even when it looks like I'm not. And today particularly, I thought we heard a lot of eloquence about dignity and the respect for workers and it wasn't just empty rhetoric. And it is a cold, cruel world out there. And I know we're often asked to do miracles, but I don't think that this is a miracle. I think that we're asking for, I think it's reasonable. And it does, it does add the needed gravitas if it does have the committee's support first as opposed to waiting for the June 1st date. So again, I, I hope you see it my way and we could get this out of committee today.
Thank you Supervisor Amiano. Colleagues, the item is in the hands of the committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Peskin.
As with all things, it is a trade-off. And so, when the June budget comes, we will know, you know, if we do this 23 million, what won't we do? And so, I mean, doing this today, you know, arguably, either means we're doing an unfunded mandate or we have to find supplemental funding for a month. I certainly understand what this ordinance has done over time and salute Supervisor Amiano for first putting it on the books and it's clearly done a lot of good and it's obviously topped out at, you know, 10.77 and 10.51 for folks with contracts. But I would be more comfortable in at least understanding where this is in the scheme of all the trade-offs that we collectively are going to have to make in seven weeks. And I'd prefer to do it as part of, of that discussion.
Supervisor Amiano, the, unless Supervisor Ellburn feels differently from Supervisor Peskin, the reality is there's not political will in the committee to move this forward today. With that said, Mr. Clerk, if you can add my name as a co-sponsor of the item. Supervisor Mercurimi is already a co-sponsor of the item. And with, and with that said, shall we just call this, continue this to the call of the chair without objection? And it'll be back. Mr. Clerk, can you read the next two items, please?